Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We're gonna open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now I'll read the reading of the Wakefield Public Schools' commitment statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are lifelong confident learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. At this time, if anyone, there's no one here, just so everyone on the the virtual land knows, if anyone is in studio or if anyone is online that has a public comment, we would take that at this time. We're just gonna wait to see if anyone's online. No? Okay. Thank you. And is there any students online for advisory council? No? Okay, we're already on item number six. Moving right along.
Right along.
Consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the February 27th, 2024, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the March 6th, 2024, School Committee Policy and Communication Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Just a quick question. You say fifth or sixth?
March 5th.
Second.
A motion's been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, yes, we can vote in person tonight. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Budget items, we're going, that's our big item tonight. Oh, wait, did we just, are we taking things out of order? Sorry.
No, I think we're gonna start with the calendar.
Okay, so we're now going to number eight.
Go ahead. Did we, did we miss budget items?
This was just the monthly reports.
Motions, warrants.
Alright, so you wanna do those budgets first. Okay, sorry. Confusing everyone. I'm confusing myself. Sorry. Okay, so Christine, for budget items.
Sure. So you have in front of you the monthly financial reports from July 1st, 2023, to February 29th, 2024. The first report is the local budget, which you can see our percentage remaining is just over 6% through February. And then the next page down shows where we are with our grants. We're getting really low on our balances, which is a good thing to spend on all that grant money. We have just over 9% remaining on our grants, and our revolving accounts are still hovering about the $4 million, but that is still with circuit breaker, which still has out-of-district tuition to be used. So that's where we are through February. The next we have, oh, did anyone have any questions on the monthly report? And then we have payrolls for February to be voted on.
I was busy reading. Move that the school, move that the school committee approve payroll warrants 32 and 34 as presented.
Second.
A motion's been made in seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
And we do have a couple of gifts.
We do.
Do you wanna read?
Yeah, well, we got $5,000 from the Friends of Wakefield High School Hockey, stipends for four assistant hockey coaches for the 23-24 winter season, and we also received a donation of $1,000 from the USTA New England, a stipend for two assistant tennis coaches for the spring season. So thank you to those groups. And so motions are move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $5,000 from the Friends of WHS Hockey, stipends for four assistant hockey coaches for the 2023-2024 winter season. And move that the school committee accept with gratitude the donation of $1,000 from the USTA New England, a stipend for two assistant tennis coaches for the 2024 spring season.
Second.
So we're doing them together?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made in seconded to accept two donations. Any discussion? No, just a thank you. All those in favor? And there's none opposed, so passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, I think I'm back on track. The floor is yours. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much. This evening I have two agenda items. The first is the draft 2024-25 school calendar. Just, just a point of notice just is that what I'd like to do tonight is just to share the calendar. I'd like to ask Kara to talk a little bit about the calendar. But this is a draft, and what I'd like to do is to kind of present this as a draft, knowing that it's going to change and edits are going to be made, right? I'd like to use the same practice that we use with our policies, which is to kind of bring this forward, put it on the table for a few weeks, allow us to kind of take whatever questions or feedback that you might have either tonight or in the next two weeks. We will also be collecting feedback from other groups. That includes our faculty and staff. We are also gonna, this is a, an agenda item for our joint labor management meeting with Unit A, with our teachers. And so they're gonna be providing feedback as well. And so right now, this is just a discussion draft, so if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them. Answer what we can at this point in time. Again, prefacing all of this by saying that this, you know, certain things that are happening on, in certain months in regard to professional development or in regard to other things that are flexible within the calendar, likely will change, right? Because next year is an election year, and there are a number of days where we need to strike the line and also support the town, making space for kind of some busy voting days. And so I could turn, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Kara just to talk a little bit about the draft that we're putting forward.
Sure. Yeah, so as Doug mentioned, we're in the drafting phase, trying to seek feedback, gather ideas with the goal of really creating a streamlined calendar that makes sense for what we need in Wakefield Public Schools and then how we can best serve the community in terms of family schedules. So that, that's always our goal at the end of the day, to have a calendar that makes sense, that can, you know, work to meet all of those needs. So just quickly walking through, you'll see in September, we're going to start again with the two full staff days at the start of the year. We do have to keep in mind that September 3rd is a voting day in town, so there will be voting happening, so we might need to think about our staff gathering and maybe flip-flopping the two days. We typically do an all, all district gathering at Galvin on the first day back, but we might have to think about doing that on the, on the fourth to avoid conflicting with voting. We thought that flipping the days was more ideal than delaying the start. That was our, our goal in thinking about that, so that's just a consideration. We did, you know, we are trying to avoid school on the bigger elections, but we have, this past year, we had school on the town election in April, which we'll continue to do. We're also, another significant change if, if and when the contract is ratified is the reduction in half professional development days, so you'll see a reduction from eight in this past year to five. And also that we're proposing the consideration of these happening on Fridays. It historically happened on Wednesday. Again, just trying to streamline the calendar. Think about scheduling, thinking about childcare. We have struggled this year a bit to meet the demand of childcare needs, particularly at the elementary level in Wakefield Academy on the, on the half-days. So through conversations, just kind of thinking that this might be a better option for families. It's typically the lowest enrollment day for Wakefield Academy, Fridays. And we're thinking that just in terms of family jobs and schedules are changing, if a remote day were to happen, it might happen more so on a Monday or Friday. We might have more of an option for parents' guidance to be able to pick their children up and go on a Friday at first rate, smack in the middle of the week. So that's just a thought that, it's a, it's an idea that we're bringing to the table and we're sponsoring a problem that we're trying to solve, which is trying to meet the childcare demands. You'll also see in November, we do have the major election on November 5th, so there will be no school. We're trying to split that day at a minimum to be half-day dedicated to conferences and half-day. PD, the elementary level has two half-days committed to conferences. We're gonna continue to talk that through and brainstorm ideas, but a possibility could even be to condense the two half-days into one and make November 5th all conferences if possible through, through further feedback and discussion. So again, just trying to streamline the calendar as best we can. You'll see all of the major holidays and vacations reflected, and then the five half-days scattered throughout the year. Again, in the spring, our conference schedule at Elementary has, pre-K at Elementary has two half-days for conferences, which you'll see reflected in March and April in yellow. And then the last day of school is noted with no snow days. We will add in that if there were snow days, what the last day could be as well. That's just a, again, a general draft. We still, once the calendar is set and approved, then there are other pieces to this. We hold a professional development committee where we get feedback on what should actually occur within those professional development days that are mapped out for the year, and we make a plan for the year as we have the last couple of years. And like Doug said, there's, there's follow-up meetings as well to get additional feedback. But just trying to throw out different ideas to, again, meet our obligations within the district, but also keep an eye on what the community needs as it's changing each year. I can answer questions if you have any.
Just a quick question about November 5th. So that's the presidential election. So you said it's gonna be a professional development day, it could also be half conferences?
So the proposal on the draft is we have it flagged to be half, the morning half scheduled for PD, and then the second half of the day is scheduled for conferences. Galvin and, I believe it's pre-K 8 typically has a half-day in the fall for conferences. Elementary has two, Galvin has one. So we're trying to just make the most of that full day off with no kids. And then, like I said, there, you know, I've had more informal conversations with different groups at the elementary level. I think we'd have to talk more if there was interest in condensing the two days into one. If there was, like, last year we surveyed the elementary level on what night do you prefer to do the evening conferences? And we got pretty good feedback there. So I think we'll wanna keep talking it through. But I think we're, we're willing to go that route rather than have a full day of professional development plus two half-days for elementary all of November. It's a lot, I think, on, on families to have that much of a disrupted schedule.
One thing, and I don't know if you've thought, if you've considered this. So I know one of the things that I think has come up at least to people I've talked to in the town is some of the frustration around parking around, the voting days in particular, particular when we've used Galvin. So I know, I think we're trying not to do that. If there were conferences on that day, could the Galvin faculty do them remotely, you know?
Yeah, that would be something, we are, we still offer Zoom conferences to families, and I think teachers are finding that, for the most part, it's the choice that people are taking is a Zoom conference. So I think with that, there's a little more flexibility in terms of space.
As much as we can keep the Galvin.
Yeah, no, I understand that. Yeah.
On a big election like that, I think it would go a long way in the town.
So I think that's definitely something we could further discuss.
One of the things that we talked about, Kevin, is, is the possibility of literally cutting the lot in half, right, and using the parking garage over on Foundry like we've done in the past, right? And so Tim O'Brien is, you know, when we provide a transportation, if people have needed to take a shuttle from the garage to the Galvin, or they can, they can walk if it's a nice day, I think. You know, but making space there. I know that there's kind of mixed feelings about using the Galvin for voting. But I think that, you know, the way that we used to do it, and so I feel like I've been here for a little while. I remember when we used to do it in neighborhoods, at local venues, and going to the Galvin has made voting more accessible. I do know in working with Betsy Sharon that I think, you know, it's, it has really streamlined a lot of the town's work, and it saved the town some money. And so, and so there's a lot of pluses there, right, using Galvin as a venue. But there is, there are challenges as well, because it is disruptive to us being able to use the building and kind of, and have personnel there. So the, the recent round of professional development that we did, we moved a number of programs to other venues, but even with that, I think that there were still some challenges, so. But thank you for the feedback.
Is, is there an assumption like when the new high school, that it would shift some of that burden and probably lessen some of this pressure?
I think the, the short answer is absolutely, right? I think even if they were splitting, splitting time or splitting venues, right? And so, so the answer is yes, right? The, the high school will take a tremendous burden off Galvin. You know, we use Galvin all year long. You know, we do theater events there, high school theater events there, middle school theater events there, music events there, we have summer school there, we have extended year service there. Hi, Lauren. We have a number of things there, so there's a, so yes, it will take a tremendous burden off of the, the extent to which we have used Galvin. So yeah, we're excited to get the new building. Just right now, we're just taking it one week at a time, just hoping to start construction on schedule.
That'd be nice.
Okay.
In terms of sort of, and to that Tuesday, and even sort of any other PD, is there, are we looking into the possibility of doing any of the PD remotely? Are there any offerings, like sort of that are in queue, anything that we're looking at that could be sort of less in-person, more?
We, we haven't, this, this past year, we haven't really done any remote PD. We might do like, this past Tuesday, maybe everyone jump on, on a quick meeting for Zoom if it's a district-wide topic, that sort of thing. Our professional development's really been more, it's been more functional, I would say, in terms of like, it's been very focused on curriculum implementation, things that we need to do together, to plan, to collaborate, to get things done in response to curriculum or department expectations. But I mean, I think it's always a possibility. We don't have, like, we haven't met as a professional development committee. We haven't really planned out what the content of the PD will be for next year, because it's really hard to do if you don't know the dates that you're working with. But are you talking particularly on November 5th, if we can get people out of Galvin?
I was just curious if it's, if it's a tool that we could use, if it's something that we've used in the past or something that we're looking at in the future, sort of as we, you know, as it's, it's definitely impactful on the calendar. You know, what sort of, what other options do we have in terms of PD? Does it always have to be in person? Is it?
It doesn't always have to be. I would say, you know, it's better in person. I think we've tried Zoom PD through COVID, and we've dabbled in it a little bit here and there, and it's just never kind of what we, what we really hope it will be, but doesn't mean that it's off the table, depending. I think it's very topic-specific.
Sure.
And, and it can't be for everything, but, and it depends on what, what you're looking to do on that day.
Yeah.
If it's, for example, at the elementary level, unit planning around the new ELA curriculum, we want people in person kind of together doing that work. So I'd be more inclined to get people off-site from Galvin and together in our different buildings than, but anything's on the table right now, depending on the topic.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So for the November 5th, that's conferences for the high school. Does high school have conferences? I'm sorry. Is that conferences for the Galvin too?
It's typically a pre-K through eight half-day in the fall for conferences.
Then when would the conferences be for the Galvin?
So they would also, so the way we have it drafted here is that half of the fifth would be dedicated to pre-K through eight conferences, and the other half would be PD. And then that.
Pre-K through eight, that's.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, and then the, the six is on there. If, you know, through further conversation at the elementary level, if it's, if it's decided we don't wanna condense into one day, then we need that extra half-day for elementary.
Gotcha. The November calendar looks so much better than previous years, because it was, it was literally a half-day every week.
And then you throw in Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. It makes for a tough one.
Even looking at March, the eight, what would be 5th through 12 would be in school the whole month, right?
Yeah, so some feedback, so, and this is where, as we continue to collect feedback, the green half-days are subject to change, like Doug said. We did get some feedback, like that kind of seems like a long stretch. Maybe it would be good to throw a half-PD day, maybe take the December half-PD day and put that to March. So all of these things are kind of up in the air right now. We just wanted to present to you a kind of minute, like, these are the number of half-days, days, holidays, that kind of thing that will need to be in play. But yeah, I think March does look a little long. Might be something to think about.
Yeah.
Kara, one other thing is, and I think we've gotten away from it in the past couple of years, is normally when we see this on the, on the district site, for a couple of years it had listed with it sort of some of the religious observances, some holidays. If we could maybe go back to that practice, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we had that as like a second-page attachment, so we can definitely do that. Yeah, we have, we have one for, I believe we have one for this year too, but it's not as accessible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could definitely do that.
That'd be great.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kara.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. So next up on my agenda is the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget, right? It's the operating budget. And so before we do, I know you're gonna ask the question. So we welcome Lauren, who's here this evening. Lauren, welcome.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you guys too. Sorry I haven't been here in a while. I've had jazz band rehearsals every Tuesday through Saturday. The timing was just not working out. And then on Saturday, we have our all-state competition.
So you just won a gold medal last week?
Yes, we participated at the MAJE senior district competition in Reading, and we were the only band there to win a gold medal. Two other bands, I wanna say, earned a silver medal with an all-state recommendation, so they also go. And I think only maybe, I wanna say, five or six bands in the state got gold medals this year, so that was definitely a good feeling for us, yeah.
So you won NESBA.
Yeah.
And, and now.
And MICA.
And MICA, and now you've gotten a gold medal with jazz band.
Yeah.
And you're competing this weekend.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for finding the time.
It's been a banner year.
Yeah, definitely.
And so thank you also for helping out with tours at the high school.
Of course, had a great time.
So I got some really positive feedback today. You toured a group, and they could not say enough about how gracious you were and how prepared you were to just answer all of that question, so thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
So before I move on with my agenda, are there any updates that you would like to share beyond all, all of the competitions that you're in for the next two weeks?
Well, we're having our spring conferences at the high school on March 21st, which is a Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00, and those will be virtual. And then winter sports was also, we had a lot of great tournaments. The season just ended last week, so. Boys' track team won the state championship. Wrestling team finished third at the state championship, and they were also middle-sex league champions. Our boys' swim team was undefeated league champions. Girls' basketball team also won the league championship. And our boys' hockey, boys' basketball, and girls' basketball teams all qualified for the state tournament. So it's definitely a busy season down in the field house. And we have our spring sports triads next Monday, March 18th. And seniors are now able to order their cap and gowns. Ms. McLeod sent the order forms for that, and on March 20th, we are going to have our annual Unity Day, which was organized by our diversity and BSU students. I'm excited for that. It's always a good day.
Great. So do we have steam night this week, right, the 14th?
Thursday, yep, Thursday night at the Galvin.
So we have steam night at Galvin on the 14th, and I think on the 20th of March, we have Unity Day?
Yes.
And that's the 21st, we'll be at the Galvin.
Yeah, and which I think promises to be pretty great.
Yeah, it's been great in the past, so it's a good day to come together as a school.
Do you believe you're ordering your cap and gown?
I, no. It's crazy. It's pretty surreal.
So you were on a panel helping us open school a moment ago, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know you can always come back.
I probably will.
Glad to hear that. That's terrific. Any announcement, any decisions on school?
No, I still have three more schools to hear back from, but UConn and Bentley are tied for first right now. We'll see.
All right.
I don't know yet, but.
Keep us in the loop.
I will, definitely.
Thanks so much. So if it's with your permission, I'd like to just move on in the agenda and get going. So the presentation that we have tonight is about 16 slides. We're gonna move through it, I think, quickly. We'll take any questions that anyone might have at the end. And so to familiarize people that might be watching at home about the process. So this is the administration's or the superintendent's proposed budget. It, you know, becomes the school committee budget when you vote to adopt it, if you vote to adopt it as it's presented. And so, but that, that takes a few weeks. In this particular case, we will have public comment, and then we will review any edits or anything that, that might be proposed to be added or taken out before a motion is made to vote. But this evening, we'd like to talk, Christine and I, Christine Buffagnac, our school administrator, and I would like to share with the committee and anyone who might be viewing at home, just, just to tell a little bit of a story about why we are kind of seeking the resources that we are, and we could talk about kind of the goals of the presentation this evening. So the goals of this presentation, again, it's a short deck, slide deck, that describes a budget book, which you all have in front of you, which summarizes the details of the budget, which is, has increased from about 90 pages to, I think, 100 and...
From about 60 to 93.
60 to 93, okay. So we've increased, you know, we've provided considerably more information in the budget book, and we'll talk about that later in our presentation. But the goals of this presentation are to communicate budget priorities that align with our, our mission, our vision, and our instructional strategy. We want to share anticipated budget challenges, looking ahead beyond FY '25 to FY '26 and '27. We wanna talk a little bit about the budget survey results that we've gotten from faculty, staff, and families. We also wanna talk about feedback that we've gotten from the finance subcommittee, that is a subgroup of this school committee, and also from our FinCom liaisons, right? And so, and, and that look back has about, it's about a little bit more than a year since we settled our last contract, not our last, excuse me, our last budget, or proposed our last budget and got it accepted. But during our la, during FY '24, we got some, some feedback that we've really tried to kind of incorporate into this presentation and also into the budget book. And then, of course, will be time at the end for any questions and answers that anyone might have. So the budget priorities for FY '25 are really labor-centered, right? They're focused on labor. We just got a tentative agreement with teachers. The contract has not yet been ratified, but what we are proposing for FY '25 is the resources to fund that contract. So we're looking, and also looking to FY '26 and '27, we're looking for a 3.5% increase, a cost-of-living adjustment, a 3.5% in FY '25, a 4% in '26, and a 3.5% in '27, right? And so, and the split, for those that, for our viewing audience that, that might not know this, this year FY '24 was supposed to be year one of, of the current new contract, but because negotiations went so late into the year, we kind of, we moved it ahead and included or moved it out to FY '27, right? So you see the increases for this year FY '25, but also in forecasting out '26 and '27. Another priority for us is to maintain intervention services and resources to ensure academic progress for all students. So one of the things that I think we've made some really effective progress in. So one of the things that I think we've made some really effective progress in are the curriculums, especially with literacy and math. You've seen and we've discussed the increased collection of data in terms of how students are progressing, especially in elementary, in literacy and math. But one of the, the kind of the linchpins in that plan is to continue to provide intervention services. The next priority is to explore points of acceleration for students in elementary, middle, and high. So one of the things that we've talked about in the school committee is our points of acceleration in math at middle school. And one of the questions that is coming up is are there other points to accelerate students? Maybe at elementary or at low, low-middle, grade five or at elementary? And are there other content areas that we should be considering for points of acceleration? One that has come up in the budget process is, is language support, right? One of the questions that has come up is, is it possible for us to support kind of a language program, either in an after-school program or during the day, if possible, for students to get some experience in learning another world language like Spanish, French, or Italian? And so the potential there is twofold. One, it gives students an opportunity to, to experience another language early on. But it also has an opportunity to kind of create points of contact for students whose home language is not English. So while students who know English might be learning another language, it might allow a student who might be a Spanish speaker to pick up more English, right? So it might be kind of like a two-way program that we are kind of just thinking about batting it around. Brian Schmidt at Walton was talking about this in our, in our budget conversations. And we were thinking about the possibility of piloting something like that in an after-school program, right? So more to follow on that. But it also highlights our need to think differently about how we're doing things. Because demands are outpacing resources. And, and we need to think more creatively about what we have and how we might meet the needs of students. So additional priorities is, you know, we include this bullet every year just to kind of, just to ground the conversation about how large the Wakefield Public Schools are. Like what is this company of the Wakefield Public Schools? It, it, we employ six-hundred-and-four employees in seven bargaining units that is working effectively to educate thirty-four-hundred, thirty-one students, which is up from, up by about sixty or sixty-two from last year. So our numbers continue to grow. We'll talk more about growth as we go on through our slides in grades pre-K through twelve and post-academy, right? So this, this bullet here, the next bullet, continue to recruit, retain, and develop outstanding teachers. We talk about labor, but I don't know if we talk about it in detail enough. The pipeline for personnel and our ability to keep teachers and staff is critical. It is critical, critical, critical. There was a legislators' breakfast this morning, and everyone's talking about the labor pipeline. How there's a shortage of labor, we need to increase lab, the labor pipeline. But the people that are kind of filling the pipeline are schools. Or the, the groups that are filling it are schools and teachers, right? And so, and we're feeling it ourselves. We used to post a position for an open teaching vacancy. And certain positions, we'd get three-hundred applicants. For some positions now, hard-to-fill positions, we'll get three applicants, if we're fortunate. And if we're very lucky, two of the three will be competitive, right? So our, our ability to kind of bring people on and develop talent and ma, and retain talent is going to be key to our success, not only next year, but I will, I would argue for the next decade and, and then some, right? And so I, I just think we need to think differently about the labor pipeline and the teacher pipeline because a lot of people aren't going into teaching because the work is really, really difficult. The hours are long. I know the, the, the party line about, you know, it's, it's only a hundred-and-eighty days and so many hours a day. Well, that's a myth, right? We know to be successful in any of these roles, you have to work outside of the school day and outside of the school year. So more to follow on that, but I do think we need to, as a group, need to think differently and talk differently about not only supporting the staff that we have, but also how we're recruiting and developing talent over time. More to follow there. We also need to look at continuing preventative maintenance and how we're managing facilities, right? So do you have a hand up?
No, just following along.
I thought you had a question. So, so with our FinCom liaisons, but they talk a lot about knowns and unknowns. So knowns in regard to the priorities this year. Again, human resources and personnel are, are critical. The need to create schedules to provide increased opportunities for intervention acceleration and supplemental support are going to be critical as we move forward. We've talked about the increased demands that students are presenting. We need to think differently about how we're getting to those students and supporting those students. Enrollment and space challenges in pre-K. And so good news is that our pre-K is thriving, 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 thriving. The challenging news is that we've just turned away, I think, about fifty or sixty students. Yeah, right? And so, you know, and that's a, that's a big hit for us because, and if we had space, we would take all of those students on. And, and again, we are required by, by statute to, to educate and provide support for young students, you know, two-point-nine to four or five, that are early intervention students that need support. But we also, the more we can provide support for students that are Wakefield students, the better opportunity they will have as they enter kindergarten and first grade to really hit the ground running. But that was, that's a, that's an important piece that we need to think about in terms of known cha, known challenges, right? So unknowns, things that, that are difficult to predict or to, to create scenarios for, is just balancing the need for in-district special education programming. So we've developed an infographic talking about how we've developed programs and what that might look like at twenty-six and twenty-seven. We'll cover that, and I'll say more about that when we get to that infographic. We also need to be very candid about the growth of our English language population. Or our ESL, English as a Second Language, became English language learners, became English learners, which has now become multilingual learners, or MLs, right?
I was wondering what the ML was.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little tricky to keep pace with that. What it is, is we have a, an increased number of students who don't speak English at home. And when they come to our district and we do a home language survey, and if they meet the criteria, we provide support for them. Not in their target language, but we provide English support. And we teach them English to help them access the curriculum, right? And so depending on their level, there are five levels that you can score into. There's level one, two, one, two, and halfway through three, or two and a half. Then there's like a high three, four, and five. If you're a level one, two, and three, you're entitled to two periods a day of support. Which means that, you know, those are often pull-out services. And so when you think about scheduling, you think about increased needs, it gets a little tricky. The other part of this is that there's not an equal distribution of the number of in students that we have here as well. So you'll see that the increase has gone from ninety-seven to one-eighteen, from FY twenty-two to twenty-four. But again, without an equal distribution, you know, you, you have to kind of adapt to what's in front of you. So we, we'll talk more about that. The other pieces that we need to talk about are additional kind of increases for, for goods and services. And, and another unknown is kind of the climate change and the need to cool old buildings. Right now, we have Greenwood that has no air conditioning. You know, and I'm, you know, amazed that the teachers and the kids just power through it every year. But with climate, the way it's going, and the increased temperatures, I think at some point, we're gonna need to kind of meet the expectation that that building will be cooled in some way. So looking ahead, forecasting FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, challenges and beyond. I talked about enrollment and space at Doyle. We need to continue to support our growing multilingual learner population. You know, it, it's not missed on anyone because we don't talk about it, it's just happening. We, we're still in the, we're still the starting, the start of a new construction of a new high school, which is necessary for us to achieve our NIOSC accreditation and to also ensure that our building is ADA accessible. We need to expand opportunities for students to experience early college programs and internships. We talk about this every year. I think the more we go on and the more we're talking about, the more, the more the state is pushing on labor and students having experiences in the workforce, the more I think that this is going to be a greater priority across the state and across the country. We need to develop a, a more comprehensive plan for special education and, and multilingual learners. And we need to, to look at the acceleration academies that we have in place. For example, when we bring our students in, our, our K-students in early, that's part of an acceleration grant. We need to learn from that and think about how we might do that with other groups, not only in the summer, but throughout the year. I think we're gonna have more to report on that in the spring as we move ahead. So, and also enhancing school safety and cyber safety, right? So, you know, the more access that students have to social media and their phones and computers, I think the more challenges we have with cyber safety and also enhancing school safety. So this is an infographic that was created by Rosie Galvin. You've seen this before. There's a lot of information on this slide. And so I, what I just want to bring your attention to are the color-coded sections. So, so what you'll see is kind of the language, the language-based growth. You'll see in blue in the fourth box down. And then you'll see ICLP in Strive, color-coded in green. And so in this budget, there's no new positions. The, the positions that are highlighted here in green are anticipated in FY twenty-six and twenty-seven.
What does um, ICLP stand for?
Integrated Care and Learning Program. It's designed to meet academic, medical, legislative support.
So we had it, but just at the elementary level, and now it's growing?
It is.
It did the middle school now too.
Is it the middle school this year or?
Yes.
Oh, I, I can't see that little thing.
It was as of fiscal twenty-three.
So the next few slides are really about the feedback that we've gotten. You know, there's a lot of demands for different resources, but we've prioritized. This is a kind of a bare-bones budget. And really what we're working to fund are new contracts and programs that we've already committed ourselves to, right? So feedback that we've gotten from families, I'm gonna turn it over to Christine to talk a little bit about our survey results.
Sure. So, so it's really important that we hear from all stakeholders. We started in, in the fall with department heads, principals. We went on the road, we went to all schools. We, we collected data at that level. We met virtually with all faculty and staff. But then we wanted to do a survey to talk to the community, to families. So we had three-hundred-and-fifty-five responses, which we thought was pretty encouraging. And this graphic really shows you, elementary was really represented well, forty-eight percent. And then we've heard from all grade levels, preschool, middle school, high school. And we were really looking at to what, what did they want to see in this budget? And then the next slide, we talk about what they were really looking as their top two priorities. They talked about social, emotional health, curriculum materials, professional development. STEM, science, tech, technology, and engineering materials are really important pre-K to twelve. Also, we, they, they really overwhelmingly wanted to see a social worker in the district. Also, another role, which I don't think we've ever had in Wakefield, is a director of student support services. Someone that works with programs, helping families, helping intervention, helping with diversity, things of that nature. Counselors and psychologists to, to really meet the needs of our students and, and things that kids are struggling with. Our families, K to twelve, also prioritize executive functioning support. How do we develop that? How do we get, get there? Families across all grade bands are prioritizing intervention, which was something we really stressed in the last budget. We really increased, if you remember, all elementary schools got about eight-thousand dollars to really expand intervention for both ELA and math. And then we also had a budget for faculty and staff. We wanted to hear from, again, the people who are in the buildings every day, working with students. What do they want to see in this budget? And then we've had, again, elementary, thirty-two-point-eight percent, tied with the middle school of faculty and staff. We heard from all grade levels. But they also echoed what families were saying about curriculum materials for social, emotional health. The social worker, again, that position popped up again with wraparound services for pre-K to twelve. The high school also prioritized the director of student support services role. So that's something that we really have to think about. Executive functioning, again, was a common theme. And then direct support and intervention. We also heard that when we really, when we were doing our Zoom calls with all the faculty about what they were looking for, for supports for classroom teachers. And again, I think that the multilingual learner position maybe didn't really pop up as much because, as Doug says, not every teacher interacts with those hundred-and-eighteen students across the district. But that is definitely something that we heard from our, our faculty and staff. But this is one of the last stakeholder groups that we heard from because we really, from the fall to here we are in March, gathered all this data. And this is, you know, I keep talking about the ninety-three pages, but this is what's really in the ninety-three pages, is things that we heard. Overall, what are the themes? And then we prioritize, really, the top two responses for teaching, we put one and two, but they're both number one. They're really both special ed personnel and ELL or ML staff. Really are things that we need to stress. Now again, like Doug said, we didn't add new positions to this budget. But we know that these are things we need to stress and to work with, with what we have to really get creative within our existing six-hundred-and-four positions. Again, the top two responses for curriculum were social, emotional, and science and technology. Again, for the student learning intervention in RBT, registered behavior technicians also popped up. So that's something that we need to really focus on. And then for district personnel, the top two responses, again, were the social worker and the director of student support. But really, this is helpful to, to all of us because it helps us not just drive the twenty-five budget, but really for the twenty-six and twenty-seven. Because this budget, we couldn't afford any new positions. We understand that we're trying to support the new contracts, but it's, it's gonna help us guide for the next two budgets as well. And then we really wanted to talk about, you know, what did we learn through last year's budget process? We talked about really not just looking at the local appropriation from the town, but all of our revenue sources. So the additional pages in the book that are online and in your books tonight really focus on all funds. I always say to Doug, this is an all-funds budget. So what does that mean? All revenue generated through, through Wakefield Public Schools to run this district is well over fifty-eight million dollars. We're not asking the town to fund fifty-eight million dollars. We're looking through every revenue source, every revolving account, every special ed, circuit breaker account, to see what we can afford and what we can offset to make sure that the tax burden to the town is not excessive, to say.
Can I add there? So if, if you remember about a year ago, Steve Mayo came to school committee. And he sat at the table, he's there with Dustin O'Brien. and he sat at the table, he's there with Dustin O'Brien. Dustin was talking about his budget, right, and, and what was happening in food service. Steve joined him at the table and, and Steve asked us, is it possible for food service to take on a greater part of the budget? And he was requesting that school committee consider taking on benefits for the food service bargaining group, right? So, we reviewed that, and last year, we agreed that we could take on half of the benefits, right? This year, in, in kind of working with Christine and working with another consultant, right? There's information in the budget book that shares this. But one of the things that we're gonna do this year to create an offset, to lower the overall budget ask, is we're gonna take on a hundred percent, we're gonna, we're gonna try to take on a hundred percent of that. So, and we've also created offsets and, and other parts of, or our other revolving accounts or, and within ranges to kind of bring down the overall cost of not only the new contract, but of this FY twenty-five budget to decrease the amount of money that we'll be asking parents to support, right? And decreasing the tax levy is what it does. What do you think, Christine?
I mean, I, I think the, the last page in the budget book, we didn't add that as a slide here, but I, I highlight it because it's a summary. Every pay, every school has a page. What we've given is three years of actual expenditures. What's actually being spent by that school by line by DESI code? And what I mean by DESI code is how we have to report to the state. Instructional services, student support, transportation, operation, maintenance. And so, we can really see where we're spending our money. We have our current year budget data, and then we have a forecast of what that's going to look like for twenty-five. So, so when we, when we talk about all funds, we talk about, well, how do we afford that? So, we talk about where the money comes from, and everyone talks about Chapter Seventy, right? Chapter Seventy is the state funding source to fund schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. But for us, in Wakefield, we also look back to where we were last year in twenty-four and twenty-five. Now, most cities and towns are not pleased with the governor's budget. The governor's budget, really, we see a minimal one point two percent increase in Chapter Seventy. So, for Wakefield, what does that mean? We're going from eight point five to eight point six million dollars for next year potentially. It's a forecast of what Chapter Seventy is going to do. Chapter Seventy helps the town of Wakefield fund the schools. Chapter Seventy money goes directly to the town, but that with the town appropriation funds the school department. And I just thought it was an important slide because we, we talk about, you know, what's the state looking like? Is, is that going? Last year, we had a nine percent increase in Chapter Seventy, but this year, we're, we're just over one percent. But we, we recognize that with our growing enrollment, it's also more expensive to, to fund the school district. So, that has to be part of the funding formula. But that with all of our other revenue sources is why we're really looking at budget offsets. Now, a budget offset doesn't mean, well, we don't need it, we can give it back to the town. A budget offset means, well, we can use it to help support the local budget. It's still supporting the school department, it's still supporting the overall fifty-eight million dollars to run the district, but it's supporting the programs that without those revolving accounts, we would never be able to, to support.
So, we're anticipating Chapter Seventy-eight to go up a little bit when all is said and done at the state level, but nothing close to what it should be and nothing close to what it was last year for an increase. And so, more to follow on that. So, this is the, the money slide. This is the, this is the question that we all get, right, which is, so what is the increase over last year? What does it look like?
So, last year, we, Doug and I presented a budget of fifty million dollars, just over fifty million dollars. And it went through a couple of iterations. We came back to you, we went to the town, we talked to FinCom about, well, can you look at your revolving accounts? Your revolving accounts look healthy. Can you support them? So, we're not asking for a budget that's over fifty million dollars. So, we did our due diligence, we went back, we talked to the town, and we came up with a reduction of five hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred thousand came from revolving accounts. We're going to charge Wakefield Academy, the, the rental accounts. We're going to look at, as Doug said, the school nutrition about helping with the, the benefits. But also, two hundred thousand dollars came from the town. The town said that they would support the schools from ARPA money. So, we, our base was still fifty million dollars, but we looked at other revenue sources to support that fifty million dollars. And I just thought it was important to show that the fifty is really going to fifty-two, three because we didn't cut anything. The personnel line in twenty-four is still forty-two million dollars. It's just we, we were looking at other revenue sources to, to support that. So, we didn't ask at town meeting for a fifty million dollar budget. We asked at town meeting for forty-nine, five ninety, one ninety-one. So, our base was reduced by other revenues, but we didn't reduce our services. We didn't cut any positions, we kept everything whole. So, by doing that, what, what are we doing for next year? We're adding the new Unit A contract, which Doug talked about the, the COLAR increase. Once we settle that contract, there's also steps, columns, longevity, other parental leave costs in that, in that contract. It's a fantastic contract that we're hoping to settle soon. But what that cost is, all personnel, all seven bargaining units, the personnel line is going from forty-two million to just over forty-four million dollars. As you can see, that's where the bulk of this budget is. Minimal contractual service increases that are just driven by IEP, transportation contracts, things that we are obligated, our fixed costs, and then materials and supplies. The other increase, as you'll see when you go through the budget book, is we've had to increase our utility costs. Our utility costs typically go up every year, just over two hundred thousand dollars a year. So, ultimately, what we're asking for tonight is a budget of just over five point five percent increase. But what that is, is from the base of forty-nine, five. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, what we're actually asking for. Because if we were afforded last year a budget of fifty million, our budget just wouldn't be over five percent. What I also wanted to highlight, and it talks about at the top, is that this budget also includes a hundred thousand dollars from ARPA funding, which we're hoping the town will continue to support. And in this budget book, we've, we've allocated three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from revolving accounts offsets. So, we really saying, hopefully, with all of the revenues that those revolving accounts are collecting, that we can offset an additional three hundred and twenty-five. With that offset from the revolving accounts, we're still just over fifty-two million dollars with an increase of five point five percent.
That also includes an additional spend down of our circuit breaker account for specialization needs, which is critical as well. And also important to note that the circuit breaker account is not a revolving account. I think sometimes it gets lumped in with, with that, but it's not.
Just to highlight, just before you close.
Sure.
Just to highlight circuit breaker because out-of-district tuitions is a huge budget number. And there is a page in the budget book that talks about increases. And we kept out-of-district costs level-funded. How were we able to do that when, when our population is slowly increasing? I think we're at thirty-two. I checked this morning with our, with Rosie Galvin, our director. We were able to do that because we were carrying forward just about a million dollars of circuit breaker. So, we were, we were talking to our out-of-district tuition, our schools about what that increase is going to look like. Last year was a fourteen percent increase, next year, it's looking like just about four point seven percent. So, we're going to weather that increase through our circuit breaker. So, again, it's in line with looking at all of our revenue sources, looking at those balances, and seeing what we can afford to, to support that. Now, that also is assuming that circuit breaker, which is funded by the state, like Doug said, it's not a revolving account. We have to apply for that every, every June. We're assuming that that is level-funded, it's usually about seventy-two percent that the town, I'm, I'm sorry, that the state funds circuit breaker. So, that alleviates the burden to cities and towns for those out-of-district tuition costs. Now, I know if you want to, there's more detail in the book about really how I came up with that and what I think the forecast for the next four years for that is going to be. But I think we're, we'll be okay next year level funding that, that account.
Happy to answer any questions.
In terms of the, the budget offsets, I noticed in the, in the big book, not in the slide deck. So, there are three areas that we're doing budget offsets from. It's, it's from facility rental, it's from academy, and it's from food service. To the amounts that you were, you were explaining earlier, the three, three twenty-five.
And Doyle.
And Doyle, sorry. Is it four? Did I miss?
It is four.
Okay. So, and then looking at the school budgets, I was noticing, and you mentioned this earlier, utility increases. I was noticing increases to fuel and to electricity. Not in every school. I think the Greenwood didn't have a heating increase. I didn't think.
Spilt solid.
Okay, fair. I wasn't sure if that, if that was a mechanism, like, are we doing like chargebacks from those type of things? Is that sort of a mechanism? When I see the, the offsets, is that a way that we're sort of charging back to, to those areas? Where we're using them for rentals, where we're using them for academy? Okay, so that's the connection.
What's allowable cost for those.
Right, right.
So, that, that is completely in line with those programs. They're running longer school days, they're Wakefield academies during vacations, summers. So, of course, your utility costs will, will go up during those times. Similarly, with food services, but also with rentals. We are, there's a slight increase in what we're gonna be charging next year for rental costs because we have to support the custodial salaries when we, when we rent our facilities, which we're, we're so fortunate that we have a large audience of people who want to rent our facilities. But they'll see a slight increase next year, about five dollars an hour increase to support the increased cost of utilities, of custodial support, things of that nature. But yes, that, that's what we're talking about, Stephen, about what those other revenue sources can support and what's allowable.
I have two questions and a comment. One question was to confirm there are no new positions being added at all next year, correct?
So, there's no new positions that we're asking to be built into the budget. If, if new positions need to be added, for example, what we've said is if we need to provide in-district programming to prevent a student from going out of district, right?
You know where my mind was going.
What our plan would be to try to reconstitute a position from within the budget. That would be our first position.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah. So, then, I don't know if you guys have ever seen the, that episode of The Office where Michael's like, explain it to me like I'm five. Okay, so that's how I kind of feel like sometimes when we do these budgets. Okay, so when I look at these numbers, right, I see, and, because I'm not so good at math, I see basically like a two million dollar in, increase, right? Okay. And the bulk of that is coming from the personnel, which is the new contract and like all the things that are like going with it. Okay.
All salaries.
All, it's all, it's all salaries. It's to match everything. Okay, so, you were, you knew where I was going with it. The bulk of the survey results were about our ELL population and our special ed students, the most vulnerable kids in, in the community. So, I guess my answer, my, it's a comment or it's a question, I just, for future, I guess, how are we going to, how are we going to help those kids going forward when that is clearly on the mind, minds of parents and, and teachers? And if we're not offering new, with, with, with the exception of if it's needed, new positions, what exactly will we be doing for these populations? Is this something that's gonna be discussed at a leader, school committee meeting?
So, I, I think our first position in problem solving or trying to create would be to try to reconstitute positions that we have.
Okay.
Right? So, for example, you saw social worker on there, right? We have a grant-funded counselor position here at the high school, right? How are we qualifying and quantifying that that position is meeting the needs of students at the high school? If there's greater needs, we need to look at caseloads and look at how we're managing those caseloads, right? Before we jump into the space of, we just need a new position, right? Because that's kind of, that's a solution, but I would argue that, that it's a solution that's not sustainable.
Yeah.
Right? We just, and so, so that's when I, so I said it a few times, and I think I said it three times, that we need to think differently about supporting the needs of students instead of just kind of use, applying traditional solutions to problems that are not sustainable, right? So, as student needs grow or increase, as the number of EL students move into the district, if our student EL population is growing, we need to figure out what level it's at. We need to figure out how we're supporting. We need to figure out, you know, can we do it during the day? Can we do it after school? You know, we need to be creative. And, and at the end of the day, we, if in the event that we do need to add a position, that should be done through the Labor Subcommittee, and they should really push us to make sure that we've exhausted every possible way that we can to, to fill that internally before we look outside. I mean, so I, so I think that that's our position. The reason we say that is because, you know, again, it's, it's the idea of creating sustainable budgets. So, that's, that's just a very quick. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah.
We added one last year. We added an EL person last year. So, we went from four point eight to five panic. And we've looked at really creative schedules. I don't know, Cara, if you want to speak to that. But, but with the growing population, right now, we feel like it's sustainable, but we know it's something, like we talked about challenges for next year. We, we feel really strong about keeping what we've built, not cutting or reducing. And we're able to keep that and sustain that. But next year, we know it's something that's probably gonna be an issue for us.
An issue next year. Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the big piece is not only the growing numbers, but also the needs within those numbers. We've seen a significant increase in the students that meet criteria. As Doug mentioned, the different levels, might call them, you know, newcomer status, students that level one, speak, you know, no English, just came here, may or may not have had prior schooling, and require a really intense, longer program to, to really meet their needs. So, we're trying to do, not just meet minimum, you know, comply, comply, like requirements and, you know, see them, we're trying to, to really make sure that the programs are high quality and that the kids are getting what they need and when they are included, that they're also supported. The increase this year has allowed us to, to support more students in the classroom as opposed to just out in small groups to help support the generalization of skills, consult with teachers more. As I mentioned, we're definitely getting feedback that teacher support and consultation around meeting the needs of multilingual learners is, is top on, on their list. So, yeah, and then, and then you get at the high school level, and, and you're getting new students coming in, seventeen years old. You're talking about graduation requirements, what's the best use of their time? What are the best inclusion opportunities? So, there's a lot of complexities to think about within the increasing population.
Just reading through some of the requests that the various schools made, sort of going back to the, the support requests that we see in the surveys, it seems like every elementary school sort of put in, even if it was a point two position, everybody is asking for help in these support areas where it seems like it's a broad sort of request across the district. And I don't see it reflected in, in what's been actually budgeted for. I assume you see the need, you see the ask, not just in survey, but in real data, sort of from the administration of those buildings. What, what can we do to sort of support that in a way that's, I mean, I know the increase is already there. You know, we have, we have contractual stuff they have to keep up with. But how are we trying to meet the needs of the schools as they're sort of calling out, saying that we need help with, whether it's emotional learning supports, whether it's language supports? It's all kind of in the book. So, is it, is it just sort of reallocation of resources to where it becomes budget neutral? Do we, do we feel confident that we can sort of meet?
I, well, I think, you know, I feel like there's, there's two questions there, right? So, it's, what are people saying that? So it's, what are people saying, that what are people requesting? And so, you know, I, I think schools are requesting support for intervention services. I think schools are requesting support in reading, uh, in special education, in, um, MLs, and with ML learners. But the, the question that I think we, we need to look at, I think as an administration, is I think we need to work with our teacher leaders and with the union to say, okay, you know, um, how are people scheduled, right? Like the traditional ways of, of scheduling, um, counselors, for example, right? I think, you know, um, we need to look at caseloads, right? We need to look at big schools and small schools, right? So, because, um, one of the, um, beauties of a, of a larger elementary school like Dolberg, for example, is that there's more flexibility in personnel serving a, a range of different groups, right? You don't have that at a small elementary school like Walton or Greenwood because they don't have the same programs, they're not serving the same populations as Dolberg or Woodville, right? So, so the question, and that doesn't say, that, that doesn't mean that Walton or Greenwood doesn't have a need, right? But the question then becomes, how do we meet their need? Instead of just answering that question with simply hiring a new teacher for a small elementary school, right? Or, or hiring a point, you know, or, or meeting that. So if you met that demand technically with what a student needed, said, okay, we, we might need a point three EL teacher at Greenwood. You can't hire a point three EL teacher. It doesn't exist. That, that, that person with, that has that amount of time available to work, those, those types of fractional increments of personnel or time that you want to put people to work. Um, if that person, uh, if an EL teacher, um, is certified and they're proficient in their craft, um, they're going to have the choice of many jobs, um, many well beyond a point three position. So, so what I'm saying, Stephen, is, is that answering the, answering the responses technically in regard to how some of the requests have been made, I think, uh, we have to push on those a little bit and figure those out differently. If, do we need more support in reading, um, in literacy? I think we do, right? But I, I, I'm reluctant in proposing a new budget to start, you know, we just settled a really terrific teacher contract that has yet to be ratified. But this is a terrific teacher contract that's going to help us maintain teachers, right? Help us retain teachers, help us develop staff, and also be an, an appealing district for other people to work in, right? So I, I think it really sets us up nicely, um, but I'm reluctant to lead with, you know, yeah, in a perfect world, I'd like these, you know, six new positions. It just doesn't make sense, right? When, I mean, eventually, so you, you saw in the infographic on our slides here, that Rosie built us. In this infographic, you know, there are placeholders where we're looking to the future to add staff. But we're, we're looking to just figure out if we can, um, maintain, maintain while trying to meet, individualize and meet the needs of kids. And if there's a one-off or a situation where we need to hire somebody, we need to demonstrate that need, um, and we need to start bringing it back to the Labor Subcommittee and, and go from there. But that's our first position, if, if that makes sense, I feel like I'm repeating myself.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that sort of, it's, it's hard to sort of budget for it now, and I don't just want to just sort of throw, throw money at it kind of thing. I want to make sure it's smart choices. I just can't help but notice that it's, um, it's not just in the slide, it's not just in the survey, it's in the requests, sort of from the people that we rely on to give us the temperature of those spaces. You know, they're like, oh, we could use a little bit of extra help here and here. Um, and I think what I had heard you say before is that we would have to be smart about sort of how we utilize, um, people in positions, um, and maybe use them in a multifaceted way, you know, wherever they can be placed best.
Yes.
And so I hear you say that, and then I read this again, and then I'm like, so, so you feel like we can do that? And, and I, yeah, so you, you say yes.
Well, I, I, I think, I think, I think we, I think we need to try.
Just in terms of like, some, a lot of the work. Adding more isn't always better if you don't have good systems in place and clear expectations around the roles that you do have. And I think intervention has come up a lot. You know, we, we categorize tier one as general ed, accessible to all kids. Tier two might be a little boost, tier three, uh, could be a little bit more, even, you know, special education. We're really trying to firm up the systems that we have in our district. An example of this is we've, you know, spent most of the, the year this year bringing our reading specialist group together. Um, all of our reading specialists who work at, um, this is a focus on the elementary level, all throughout the district, they've all received the same type of training from Hill for Literacy, which, um, does a great job kind of aligning interventions with our tier one curriculum, kind of giving ideas around lessons and intervention lessons that, um, are backed by research, kind of giving, um, all of the reading specialists the same tools to provide equitable, um, experiences for kids, coming together to talk about entry criteria. When does a student get picked up for the reading specialist? How long should they work with them until they're exited out and a new group of kids can come in? Trying to get those systems really secure. And, um, same thing Doug and Christine mentioned, um, math intervention, trying to get on the same page with that. So I think that there were, there were definitely holes in some systems that we had in the district that we've been trying to work on. So I agree with what Doug's saying, I don't think adding more, if you don't have good systems in place and clear expectations for what the roles should be doing, then adding more doesn't always help you.
I think even the infographic you have up now, like sort of Rosie's like built out of this, I've seen this built out over the past like three years, like every, every year it's shown, it's, a new slot gets filled.
Right.
And it's definitely like progressing out.
Right, right.
So I appreciate sort of that methodical, you know, way that it, it's going about, um, yes.
So, you know, one of the things that we're committed to is really working hard to try to create sustainable budgets. Right, and so, um, it's not enough to just get a new great contract for teachers. It's, behind that, you need to be able to sustain that contract, um, and sustain that budget. Because if you can't, it takes moments to undo what takes years to build. And, and if I don't say anything else, I hope that you can kind of consider that, right? This, this infographic that was created by Rosie, right? It's taken us years to kind of build this structure. Years to kind of build these systems and expectations, right, within these systems. You know, districts that go too fast, that are hasty, end up deconstructing, right? Or taking it apart because they just can't sustain it, right? So we're looking at really trying to sustain, we're also looking at the economy. We, we would be crazy if, if we weren't very candid about what's happening at the state level and what's happening throughout the country, right? The state for two quarters receipts have come in under what was forecasted. It's not missed on any of us, right? So what does that mean? That means that the governor's kind of rainy day fund, which is enormous, which, you know, I think, in my opinion, it's raining, right? And, and it's time maybe to access that, but I'm one person. But, you know, we're one district, and so our responsibility is Wakefield, not the state. And so, we need to respond to what's in front of us. You know, I'm really proud of what we're creating, I'm really proud of the work that we're doing. With that comes the responsibility of, of really working hard to try to make it work. And so that's, that's our position. Again, I feel like I'm, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but.
Okay.
We don't want to come and tell you we have to make cuts.
Yeah.
I think one of the most important things I do is every month I give you a financial report. I just did it about an hour ago. And I tell you where we're at and how we're doing, and I encumber everything. Every position is encumbered, I know where we are at all times. Does that mean emergencies camp up? Of course. But right now, we're in a budget freeze. We know that our budgets are, are tight. COVID money has ended, S R money has ended. So we don't want to be, I'm on a list with other business managers. I, I hear other districts making cuts. We don't want to be in that position. Of course, we could always ask for more, and we can try to expand more, but we have to be thoughtful about how we progress and how we get there. I don't want to undo what we've built since I've been here, since the past four or five years. It's important to keep going. This slide, I almost call it, we have to spend money to save money slide because Rosie is building programs to keep students here. So we're not going out of district. So we recognize that these are programs that our, our district needs and how it's thoughtful. And, and it's a three, it's twenty-three, twenty-four, and to twenty-seven of how we're going to build that.
So exemplary districts are, are figuring out how to get it done. And I think that that's, we're, we're just trying to follow that, that plan, right? And really be thoughtful about what we're doing. And so, aga- again, we, we, this might, this, this could change based on student enrollment, could change based on student needs, right? And so, we will work to adapt to meet those needs because we have an obligation to do that. But right now, in terms of knowns and unknowns, which we say we will budget for, that's what we're, we're committed to, um, and creating a sustainable budget, this is, I think, um, I think pretty prudent.
Also, this is a school committee budget. If you feel there's something that you want to add, that's within your purview as a school committee. If there's something that you want us to reallocate, I mean, that's why you have the books, you have homework. So, we, we have a public hearing next week, so we'll hear from the community and the public to see what their thoughts are. But this is what Doug and I feel is what we should bring forward.
I appreciate, appreciate the thoroughness of everything you put into this, Christine. And of all the ninety-some odd pages, I really only had one question that you helped answer for me. When I look at the budget, really almost all of it, four point eight eight percent, if I remember, is going towards that personnel line. And so, you know, this is what the cost is to provide, you know, fair wages to our staff, to keep our staff, uh, in district, and, and, you know, as Doug said, that's critical for, for years to come. And I also appreciate that you've taken every opportunity where we can give back and not ask the taxpayers of Wakefield to fund stuff, to, um, to take that out of our revolving accounts, like for food services. So I do appreciate all the hard work you put in.
Thank you.
Uh, for our growing ML population, um, do we, we don't receive any additional funds? Or do we receive additional funds like special ed, um, students for them?
We were just talking about this on our, on, just before our, our meeting this evening. So we receive a Title III grant, um, that's managed through SEEM Collaborative to provide support for, um, our EL teachers and our EL learners, our ML teachers and our ML learners. And so, um, but it's a petence, it's a nominal amount of money.
And a lot of limitations.
A lot of, yeah, we can't put staff on, on that grant. It's curriculum material, supports professional development.
Actually, resources and programming, um, we tend to use it a lot for our summer programming to support students. We just purchased a new, uh, newcomer, um, curriculum for students across the district, so things like that. But yeah, staffing and translation are knowns for that grant, which is tricky. Because those are the, the areas we're always trying to improve on and, especially as the amount, the, the, just number of languages too. So even within that number, um, has dramatically increased too. Used to be Portuguese and Spanish are still our primary too. But just trying to translate well as best we can too gets expensive and, yeah. But we do get some money, sorry, not to be negative.
Yeah, no, but it's, but it's not like the seventy-something percent that we're getting for special ed students.
Yeah, it's not even comparable to the special ed reimbursement.
Just going back to the budget offsets that we're doing for some of those accounts, it seems like, um, most of them, we wouldn't be able to use that mechanism going into like, I think you forecasted out to twenty-eight?
I, I don't, I'm hesitant, I don't want to talk about, I don't, some other managers and districts talk about a funding cliff. But when I use the word, I said I wasn't going to use. You talk about what is sustainable, knowing what you know at this time. So that's what a forecast is, right? But if we are continually to draw down from a steady revenue stream, at some point, your arch is going to drop. So I, I just think maybe from twenty-five to twenty-seven, we can do that. We're going to look every year, we're going to present that to you every year, but I don't see it going past twenty-eight.
You know, um, Amy and I had a conversation after Steve's presentation last year. You might not remember this, but you said, yeah, in a very common sense approach, you said, yeah, we should look at this every year, and if we can support the town.
Oh, give money back?
Or if, and if we can, we should, right? Would seem to make sense, right? Like there's a, you know, but to, to say, you know, while we're presenting a draft budget, what we could commit to something like that is, we can't commit to something like that. That's why the offsets have a range, you know, a low to a high, right? And that also affects kind of that forecasting out to twenty-eight. And, you know, um, we might have to, to look at those offsets sooner than twenty-eight. Or it might be, it might be good beyond twenty-eight. You know, I think, uh, we're just trying to plan in a way that is, again, sustainable.
So, I think I heard you say earlier that we're now taking the benefits for food services?
Correct.
One hundred percent?
Yes.
When was that decision made?
We made that decision, um, in presenting this five point five percent budget.
Oh, it's part of this?
It's part of this proposal.
Right? So to drag that number down, that five point five, to get to five point five, we needed to create, you know, an offset. And so Steve asked last year if we could do this. We looked at it, we worked on this with a consultant, and so what we're proposing is that we fund a hundred percent.
What does that cost?
Roughly about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the revolving account.
No, I know where it's coming from, I just get nervous that. Are you going to look at that every year, or are you saying like?
We, we will look at that every single year.
Why don't you take something, sorry to give it back?
And also, keep in mind, next, in September, we will be negotiating with six other units. So this, this resolves for the next three years, the Unit A contract, but we will have clerical, custodial, traffic, um, Unit C, and, um, the administrative unit to negotiate as well. So that'll be coming in next year's budget.
Yeah. Yeah, so whoever's on the Labor Subcommittee. This is like one of those, I lay this on you would do.
No, thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you can read that. So first of all, I think this is a great, uh, budget, um, I look forward to the next steps. I think it's really well done, it's very well written, it's articulated well, the presentation was really good. So, much thanks to, to all of you, to the Budget Subcommittee, et cetera, that's been working on this for so long. I do, you know, I remember going back to what the chair just asked was, and I certainly remember Steve being here, I was in support of that. But I remember either thinking that or if I articulated it, but I didn't necessarily want this to go into perpetuity. And so I'm wondering if we, if we weren't to offset that, what would be the budget increase we would be asking for?
It would still be five point five because that's, it's affecting food services. What in effect that's doing is reducing the balance to the food serving, service revolving account, which just means he couldn't, um, extend that balance longer than twenty-seven or twenty-eight. So, knowing that, and also he's negotiating with the cafeteria workers in September too. So we've ta, we've taken all of that into consideration about what he can afford. Dustin and I have gone round and round about this, can you sustain this? Can we do this next year in twenty-five? Yes, I can, but Christine, I understand, I'm negotiating.
Yeah.
Food is cost more, transportation, when, when fuel costs go up, we all know it when we go to the grocery store, right? So he feels it in all of his contracts with all of his vendors. So we thought, um, in good faith with the, with the town, we would support that to the, the food service revolving account for next year.
Can I, can I repeat your question and make sure I heard you correctly? So I, I think I heard you say, so if we were not to give,
Correct.
Not to fund the other half, right? Which is essentially seventy thousand dollars. Where would that money come from, right? Is that the?
No, what would be so, how do you break to the five point?
What would be, what would, we would go five five to five what?
Correct.
Right, right, right.
No, because right now, the town is funding those benefits. So the town came to us last year to support those, the town to support those benefits. We are agreeing to that. We are agreeing to that because it's an allowable cost to the food service.
So that offset benefit goes to the town?
I get you, okay.
But to be clear, in twenty-eight, if, if that revolving account could no longer support that, we would come back and look at the local budget to fund that.
We would ask the town to fund it.
We'd go back to the town.
Because the town funds benefits.
Okay. To Amy's point about once you give, you don't necessarily get back.
Then our 5.5 would go up.
Right. I think that was back to sort of.
Yeah, so it's, it's coming.
From somewhere.
It's coming from the W.
Yep.
Right, but we're within the Ws, right?
So it wasn't, it's not a cost savings to Wakefield Public Schools to pay, like the budget's still the same because the town was paying it, right? It was never a line item in our budget to say we're going to pay for it.
Benefits are not a line item in our budget.
Right.
Correct.
So there's not a cost savings in our budget then? Or it's not an increase either?
We're saving the town the cost of those benefits.
Town.
The other revolving accounts are a cost savings. They are helping the local budget.
Right.
We're moving utilities to the revolving, we're moving custodial costs to those revolving.
But if, the fine print, right? And so if you remember Christine made a comment that we were in a scenario where we're looking at 300,000, 200,000, and this year we're supposed to get 100,000 back from ARPA, right? So the, you know, the 5.5, we were supposed to get $100,000 support there. So, you know, maybe the offset that they get in regard to benefits helps them provide the 100,000 back to us. I don't know. I mean, this is a Steve question or a FinCom question.
It definitely seemed sort of artful. And if I didn't say before, thank you Christine for all the work that did go into it. Because I even read your little, like, your little synopsis before we got into the numbers and read them two or three or four times because I had to like play catch-up. But there's a lot of detail in the ninety-three pages, it's all appreciated.
I worked with a consultant, she's a retired school business administrator. She's very helpful. But we did two sections. We did a section of just where we are right now, what we can afford next year. And then the second section really gives a deep dive of what's the past seven years look like and what's the forecast for the next four years. And I think that's really helpful about what can we sustain, but not just for twenty-five, but when can this end? You know, this is not a forever conversation.
And this is, this is on our website, this is in our faculty link.
Yeah.
Right. For public comment for the next.
Correct.
Few weeks.
It's on the website.
So FinCom has, our FinCom liaisons have a copy of this?
Yep.
So we are prepared to meet with them.
Tomorrow?
Thursday evening.
Oh, Thursday. Okay.
All are welcome.
It's this Thursday?
It's Thursday.
Where is it?
Seven.
I believe it's Zoom.
Seriously?
It was on the town website with the Zoom link.
Is it the same as the night?
Yes. Correct. We also.
Thank you.
So if there are no more, if there are any more questions, happy to answer.
Lauren, any budget questions?
Yeah.
Bye Neil.
That's a lot of money.
Oh, well, that's a lot.
That's about it.
So I just, I haven't given an update in regard to personnel and positions. So right now, we have five positions that we're looking to fill for Unit C, for our educators. We're looking at one non-rep position, which is our Medco Middle School Coordinator, right? That position is still open at this time. And we have Unit A positions that are currently being filled by long-term subs. And we have one position that's opened that's being backfilled by existing staff. And so, but as we move into next year, we will be kind of evaluating class sizes and looking at positions across the board.
Have any of those positions been open since September?
The, no.
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 So it's like, it's since September we've had.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. The Medco Coordinator position has been open since September. And so, yeah. And so, but positions that we will be posting right now for Unit A, one is our guidance position, we have a guidance position that's going to be open. So we're going to post for that, we're going to, we have a special education position that currently a long-term sub is in, we're going to be posting for that position as well. So you might see those on the website, with the exception of that, that's where we're at. So not, not many, is, not many is the answer to the question. Yes, sir.
And if I recall, Christine, you had some number of known retirements in here as well?
I was just thinking, those are retirements that Doug is alluding to.
Oh, those are the retirements?
Yes. So what we do is we post anticipated vacancies based on, MTRS requires you, if you're going to retire from a teaching position, to let the state know kind of within three months of your retirement date. So we know who's retiring from Unit A. Right now it's about five. I think we're still waiting on a couple more who are thinking about it. They're getting their final numbers from the state about what their retirement's going to look like. But, but those are the positions that we know about. Couple at the high school, couple at the middle school. And I think one reading specialist maybe as well. Exciting for people to retire.
Speaking of staffing, a parent asked me about if a principal's contract was renewed because we had the three year, we hired two principals right after COVID, right? Didn't Mr. Schmidt and Meg Laub thing?
So we have several administrative positions, not administrative contracts, that are going to be renewed, yes.
So if you could maybe bring a quick update on that, the next meeting where all the principals are?
Happy to do it.
Because sometimes I feel like that isn't communicated, like to the school, like, hey.
Happy to do it.
We've just renewed your principal's contract type of.
We have four principal contracts that are expiring in June.
Four of them, okay.
Four of them.
How many total, eight? No, is that including assistant?
There's seven principals total, but.
The assistant principals are part of the Wakefield Administrative Association. We'll be bargaining with next year.
Okay. Yeah, so look forward to that.
Good. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so for, I actually have a comment, the WEF, Spelling Bee is this Friday, don't write that in. I mean, sorry, I'm going to read here. The WEF Spelling Bee is this Friday. And I guess there's a couple tables left up for grabs. It's a really, I've been a number of years, I know you've been as well, Stephen, can say it's a really good time.
Have our table already?
Yeah.
Might have two.
Stephen will probably win, but if you like to come in second place, there's tables available. It is a good time and you can dress up or not, but usually the costumes are fun.
I think you get bonus points.
You do get, yes you do, and you need them. And Andrew Tetros, the emcee, and he's very entertaining.
Buy all the stingers.
But, okay, buy if you can get a table. So you can register on their website, which is wef01880.org. So that's this Friday. And then, that's March, then in April, they'll have their Celebration of Learning on April 10th, which is one of my favorite events. This is all my updates. We will go into Subcommittee Reports. Does, so Finance and Facilities, Mr. Markham's not with us tonight. Has there been a meeting?
Yeah. There, there hasn't been a meeting since our last meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow. I think our FinCom liaisons are going to be joining us. We're going to be going over budget sort of in preparation for the FinCom presentation that I just realized I'm going to miss because of Steam Night. Otherwise I would be there. But, but we just kind of went over what our, it was, it was labor. It was like just because we continued to talk about, our last meeting was talking about the TA with the teachers, and I assume that's what we're going to go over kind of tomorrow. There are some other sort of nuance things that are in the larger budget. I assume they'll bring them up. There was a reduction in like technology, there was talking about sort of forecasting if we have to make any increases to like services, service fees or things like that. I assume that's the kind of stuff that we're going to go over. So yeah, probably more to report next time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, look at you.
Sure.
Labor and Personnel.
Sure, we'll keep going. So Labor and Personnel, we met last week, I believe. And we actually went over a, there was like an educator survey that had gone around the high school. Sort of just about culture, climate, that sort of thing. And there were a couple of, I think, action items that sort of the administration had gone through, talked with Ms. McLeod, sort of reviewing that. And we kind of just had done some overview on sort of some of the responses and what some of the action steps were being taken. It seems like it's something that's actively being sort of dealt with, isn't the right word. It's being addressed. And so she's, I think, bringing together her ILT and sort of working together as a team to sort of discuss some of the finer points.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Student Services, Amy?
We've done that.
Okay. Policy and Communications, Mr. Fontenelle's not with us tonight, he's at Frozen. So I think it's over by now because I know my kids are at cravings.
We, we did meet.
Do you have an update?
Yeah, we did meet, and we were talking about the homework guidelines. I don't want to call it policy because more guidelines. And we reviewed some of the feedback that Dr. Lyons got from, I think, some of the administration and some of the senior leaders throughout the district. And we were hoping to have a student with us who has some feedback to give on homework. Hopefully he'll echo some of Eileen's thoughts, but we don't know. It's going to be a question, what he's going to share with us. He's a fourth grader, I believe, at Greenwood. He wasn't available at the last meeting due to a conflict. So the plan is for him to come back at our next meeting. And then maybe we'll hopefully be able to finalize our guidelines and bring it back to the full committee.
I'm sorry, a fourth grader's coming? Is it a subject matter expert?
No, just a student who, a parent reached out and wanted to give some feedback on homework. And so.
And that being said, I would welcome any student from any age level too that would want to participate in this.
I can imagine he's going to tell us how much he loves homework, but I'm just waiting to hear what he has to say.
Where, where would guidelines reside?
So it goes on the same part of our website with all the policies, as far as I know.
It's going to, oh, it's going to be a policy.
Yeah. But it's a guideline.
I think it would have to be in the handbook.
I think it would be, it would be shared by principals to staff. But it could also go on the, on the policy.
I think it would need, I think it would need to go to parents too, so that they would know the guidelines.
Well, if it, if it's on there, if it's a handbook or a connector distributed by.
Yeah.
The principal, they would get.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is coming to the next meeting or?
No, we have to have another meeting to get the feedback from the student. Then hopefully we'll, we'll.
Oh, the student's coming to your September eighth.
Correct. And then we'll finalize the guidelines and then we'll bring something back to the full committee.
Okay.
We welcome research.
Eileen welcomes everyone who says they hate homework.
I welcome all opinions. No one has to just agree with me, but I welcome all opinions. I just know that most kids are going to probably agree with me.
Are there, are there teachers that are giving feedback on the usefulness of homework? Or if it, what they, I'm just curious, like whose, whose opinions are, not even opinions. Yeah, so who are you asking? I'm just curious.
I'm, I'm asking for anyone's opinion on the usefulness. Homework is a very, I don't want to say it's controversial, well, it is a little controversial, but it's, it's, it's very varied in opinions because there's a lot of research that points to it being, doing the opposite of helping students. But then there's people, it's a very Americanized system.
Okay.
They don't have homework in Europe, they just don't. So, and I can't change the American education system, but I can try to make some change here in Wakefield. I'm a little European. You heard those Swedish students, right, Sweden?
They did, they said they go to school like 12 hours a day.
Yeah, but they don't have homework.
That's why they don't have homework. They do.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I don't think they go to school. But they don't have homework and they have more flexible time.
Kevin's not going to be, he's going to be bummed he missed this meeting.
I know, Kevin and I are very varied in our opinions, but we always agree to disagree. We do, I always agree to disagree with people.
Sure.
Not everyone has my awesome take on it.
Look forward to it. That'll be great.
Hope this happens before April.
You can come in, let's save you a chair.
Absolutely.
Comment. Okay, so Liaison Reports. Any Liaison Reports? The Environmental Sustainability Committee will have a table at, at Steam Night. Is that right, is it Steam or stuff?
It's Steam, it's Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math. They added the A for Arts.
Oh, so everyone should stop by that table, it's going to be an interactive table.
Stop by my table.
What is your table?
We're doing some Super Taster.
Yeah, but what, what, under what umbrella?
My, like.
Dangles family?
No, my, my company supports like community outreach programs. Yeah, so myself and somebody else in the community, Julie, I can't say her last name because I butcher it every time. But so we both work at the same place, so we're going to do a table.
But what are you doing?
Super Taster strips, so it's basically.
They just did that in science.
Did they?
I think in eighth grade, where you have to taste it and some people can taste it and some can't. They just did that.
It goes to like DNA markers.
Yeah, shout out to Mr. West, Science.
Awesome. So if you want to taste horrible stuff.
Anyone else have a table? Steam Night? No. How about the WEF Spelling Bee?
I asked you guys to explain it to me like a five-year-old, the budget. So no, I don't have a table at the Steam Night, but I wish I did.
Any other Liaison Reports?
I will say, well, Youth Council is having a meeting tomorrow, I'm going to try and attend. Aside from that, I also just wanted to mention that the HRC hosted a panel for International Women's Day in the Black Box Theater, the Savings Bank Theater of the high school. It was amazing. There were six, six women sort of from our community. There was a woman that heads the Veteran Services for like Sawgus, Mel Rose, she's amazing. She's a firecracker. And, and then some executive, high-level executive women. The woman that emceed it, Jess, is the person who puts on sort of the moth-like open mic nights that's at the Albion. She's amazing. So just, it was great, their stories were fantastic. They talked about, they talked about mentors, they talked about challenges, they talked about overcoming challenges and sort of what you would say to sort of your younger self. And actually, one of the people that was on the panel was a high school junior who started a, I want to see like a, is it a Muslim cultural group? She, she had something outside of this community that she was a part of, like a young woman's group. And she felt like it was lacking in this community, so she kind of started something at the high school. And it took off a little bit, so she has a nice group here. And just, she was very well spoken and sat just as well up at that panel as any other.
Afrim?
That name sounds familiar, probably.
It's a rock star.
She was.
She's a margin man.
Right, of course, of course she is. Band kids are the best. And then so, I mean, it was amazing because she was right there with, with everybody else that had been in their careers for, you know, 20, 30, 50 years. And she had just as much insight and sort of thoughts to offer. It was such a great panel. When we do wonderful things like this, I always wish more people would come. We could have filled a few more seats in the theater, it would have been great.
Great.
I'm glad you enjoyed it.
I, yeah. I dragged, dragged my kitty, asked good questions to me in my seat, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? It's like the quiet end. Next School Committee meeting is Tuesday, March 26th at seven, so two weeks from tonight. But before then, we have a special night next week. We have a budget hearing on the 20th. Do I have the date? But it's on Zoom, so anyone can just pop in, share your thoughts on the budget we presented tonight. We take feedback seriously. That, future addendums, there's a long list. Does anyone want to add? Stephen, you don't have one?
No, we'll get through a few of those before we add, maybe another one up now.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily want to, this is a lot, but, but I know that some others might have gotten a couple emails today about the eighth grade moving on ceremony. And I don't know if it was just something to just more, more of a comment, I guess, of just, you know, if you have any concerns to reach out to Ms. Webb about that because that's not something that we would discuss. But I don't know if, if and when the details are figured out for the moving on ceremony, that she could come in and, and talk about it.
We will get them in the school committee.
Cool.
Great.
Great.
Awesome.
Thank you. School committee comments?
I have a couple of comments. First one is, at last night's town council meeting, they mentioned they're starting to look at the remaining ARPA funds and how they'll spend them down. And one of the things that Chair Chines mentioned is possibly putting solar panels on the galvan, which I found pretty exciting. There's no guarantee that that's how they'll spend their remaining money, but it's something they're gonna be considering. And they're going through over the next handful of meetings and trying to figure out how they're gonna spend those remaining dollars because they're running out of time to spend that money. The other thing I wanted to mention is unrelated to that. So Wakefield, we're pretty lucky to have amazing color guard and winter percussion teams. And so both color guard and winter percussion had their first competitions this past weekend. Winter percussion was up in, over in New Hampshire. I think color guard was up in Salem, New Hampshire. The winter percussion team came in first and I think color guard came in second. Was that right?
Yeah, I think color guard is at three competitions. They usually start a bit earlier.
Okay.
They've both been killing it so far. Sadly, I did jazz this year because the person who played Barry Sax last year graduated. So I moved up and I couldn't do jazz, track, and winter percussion, so I had to drop percussion. But it definitely seems like a good show this year. It's pretty cool.
And the show is called Assembled. And it will wrap up in April down in, I'm probably gonna get the town wrong. I want to say Dartmouth, Mass. And they've got a handful of shows for winter percussion through then. And, you know, it's one thing, I forget how many years, Mr. Marlowe, have they been doing it? I want to see, you only said eight, and I probably got that number wrong. But it is amazing to see, and this is true not just for winter percussion, but also for the other music programs we have, just how far ahead Wakefield is from many other towns and cities throughout New England. So I think we're very lucky to have, have those programs here.
Thank you.
Do they have eighth graders on, on this year?
So the winter percussion does have eighth graders on it? I don't know about color.
Well, since the marching band goes with eighth grade, the winter ensembles include seventh graders because it's kind of like a prep season for these more like specialized groups that like are very technical and need just a lot of work, especially if you're new. So they have seventh and eighth graders.
Oh, seventh grade?
So, yeah.
You need one of those like time-twisty things that Hermione Granger had? Like, you can do all the stuffs. Definitely do all the stuffs.
That would be good. Anyone else have comments? Go ahead.
Just wanted to give a little plug again for CPAC. I didn't have a liaison report, but I just want to give another plug again. As I always do, I am the liaison for CPAC and just say how wonderful they are to work with. And clearly, you know, special ed is on the mind of a lot of people according to the budget survey and just lean on them. They're wonderful. Anne and Chrissy are just like wonderful people that you can lean on. And if you need any advice or anything, they're just fantastic. So just want to give another plug for CPAC.
And then just real quickly, you had mentioned the Spelling Bee by WEF. I cannot spell, so, but I can, I can do, they have an auction going on, so I'm good at doing auctions. So although I now have a nemesis, Gen C keeps outbidding me.
What are you trying to get? I hope it's not an offer.
Run with Officer Tobin. For my nephew, not for me. But whoever Gen C is, I think she's maybe put a little out of reach for me at the moment, but.
I ended up changing my name on that because.
Really?
I was trying to get something. Not that, I'm not Gen C, but.
That'd be funny if you were Gen C. But there's a few more days left in that auction. WEF, I think it's already been said, it's just an amazing organization. It's been for so long.
It ends Friday.
It ends Friday, yeah. So if you can't spell.
Jancy, back.
I know, I know.
At the last minute for that.
You get a stamp.
There's lots of good things on there, so that are worth, worth.
I put a new name. I'm like, I can't keep going back and forth, this person. Just new name. Always wanted this name.
Then you forget and just bid against yourself and you don't even know.
Well, good luck.
Thank you. No, I'm out already.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll add one more item. I had asked for an item to be added to the agenda and it didn't fit this week and it's not gonna fit in two weeks because Tim is gonna be out of town. So I'm just gonna make a comment instead, which is parking is about to go from bad to really, really, really bad at the high school. The, you know, as we, you know, we're going to be expanding the teacher lot.
Hold on for a second. Did the email say what you just said?
I'm paraphrasing. I'm giving the Reader's Digest version.
Okay.
Okay, so the parking's gonna go from bad to really bad at the high school. And, and so.
I don't know, maybe you could say it's gonna go from a lot of spaces to less.
Okay.
Difficult.
And so, you know, my comment is as follows, and I had given some feedback to Tim, which is anything we can do to talk to the traffic advisory committee, any spots that are currently hour restricted, no parking on, you know, hemlock, on farm, even unfortunately on some of those side streets. I suggest we look at anything we can do to help out families whose students have no choice but to bring a vehicle. It's, it's going to be very, very difficult. The other thing that I had asked was, part of the plan looked at taking some of that upper lot and closing it, part of it off prior to the end of the school year to do an expansion. And, and I asked if we could potentially look at maybe pushing that out a couple of weeks until school ends and finding some miraculous way of reopening upper lot with more spots before the new school year starts. So I'm hoping we'll still get that on a future agenda item, but I have received feedback from.
Did you see Amy's email about parking?
I've seen all of her emails, yes. Is there one from today? Because I've seen two of them.
No, but I don't know, I don't remember just seeing it feeling like that much fire and brimstone.
Yes, so, so Lot C, which is the lot where, the main lot where WCAT is and where students park.
Yeah.
Is gonna be completely shut down for student, for student parking.
But the upper lot is gonna be available, right?
Yeah, and, well, so it's gonna be available until, it's already filled up every day today. And on June first, unless that date gets pushed out, it's going to even be reduced some more temporarily.
Okay.
There's nowhere for those people who are in Lot C to, to park unfortunately, without more spots showing up.
Wait, I live off the hot street, so I'm just gonna start walking to school. But my only concern about the upper lot thing is if it's starting on June first, is that gonna have any sort of conflicts with graduation?
I don't think so.
Okay, because that is graduation.
I got it. I got it. So, so I think graduation is a priority for us, right? And so in making kind of those spots available and that lot available during that time would be, I think we're gonna be working on it.
Okay, I was just wondering about that.
No, I, that's.
It's the same day.
So I'm, I'm anticipating that we will be making allowances for graduation.
Okay.
So, but more to follow on that, right? And so, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to just the start of construction. I know that there are changes happening with parking. I know Principal McLeod is, has sent out some information. We're also developing other parking areas, right? And so they're restriping a number of existing spaces that we have to increase the number of spots that we had. The front of the school is gonna be restriped. The existing administrative lot, teacher lot's gonna be restriped. That is also going to be expanded, right?